Okay, so we'll reopen our public session after executive session for Tuesday, November 12th. Please join me in the question.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, in accordance with Master's open meeting law, I remind everyone, the meeting is being recorded. If any member of the public would like to make an audio or video recording of the meeting, please notify me first by raising your hand, either in person or remote. State your name and your purpose of recording. And also, please remember to mute your microphones to minimize background noise. Is anyone recording today?
No line recording.
No, great. Okay, done. Mission and vision. Mike.
FPS mission. The Founding Public Schools creates world-class student learning experiences. Our Clippers are empowered to pursue their goals with curiosity, integrity, and resilience. Vision. Clippers are creative, inquisitive, and engaged learners who participate in their community as socially responsible citizens. Clippers effectively communicate and solve problems that impact the world around them.
Thank you so much. At our seats today, we have a couple of things that I just wanted to mention. Margaret and I brought presents from the MASCE conference for you. Margaret brought us parliamentary procedure and executive session handouts. And I brought a handout from the dignity index, which was a presentation by Timothy Schreiber on the importance of dignity in public discourse and assuming the importance of assuming positive intentions whenever communicating about contentious topics. So I brought those for you guys, too. And, uh, public comment. If there is no objection, again, we'll take all the comment on navigating the future at the start of the meeting, as we have been doing recently. I remember the public that comments should be limited to two minutes in length. And due to open meeting law, the committee cannot act on public comment. For items on the agenda, the chairman accepts comments following the committee's discussion. And additional comments and feedback can always be submitted by email to schoolcommittee@comment.k12.us. And I'm betting we have public comment. Who's going first?
Just a point of order, point of information. Because we may possibly be voting on navigating the future with some aspect tonight, I believe it is against protocol to take, you know, the committee cannot act on public comment for items on the agenda. The chair may accept comments following the committee's discussion. So any comments on navigating the future should happen during that timeline agenda.
That's how we usually do it, but if there's no objection, I was gonna allow them to speak now. If you don't want to do it that way, we can do it.
I would wait for the, I would wait until we have our discussion. So I don't know what they're all gonna say, if anything. But at least that way ties into our discussion on the agenda.
Point of order.
Please.
If, if there's a motion on the floor, people don't want to talk to the motion, they can't talk about other things.
I correct.
So you are assuming that you know what people are gonna talk about, and we don't.
Yeah, so might limit what they can actually say.
Okay, point of order, the motion was never seconded, so my...
No, she's saying when we, once we have a motion on the table later on in the meeting, they would only be able to speak on that motion. They would not be able to speak about anything else related to navigating the future. It'd have to be relevant to that topic. And since we don't know what everyone is gonna say,
Okay.
we might be limiting what they're gonna be able to talk about. We want to be able to have everyone say whatever it is they'd like to say. We just didn't want to make them sit through our whole meeting to do so.
Okay.
Especially with all the kids out there. Yeah. Although this sounds like they're having fun, so they might not mind, but if you object at the...
No, I didn't know we were all even talking, I was just...
Okay.
You get a direct to a point of order, who's correct?
No, 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 if he wants us to vote on whether or not we move public comment, I'm happy to do so. Okay. So we're gonna do it as we have done for the last couple of meetings. We will take public comment from anyone who wants to be heard at the start of the meeting. And you're welcome to stick around for later as well. All right. Who wants to go first? Come on up to the table and make sure you state your name for the record.
Do we have clinics here? Don't worry.
You know, I know where they suck, but something about your pocket kind of... You definitely come to the bathroom.
There are enough that I've heard, so.
Paul and Mike.
No noise! My name is Julie Ann Weldon, and I'm a parent of an East Falmouth Elementary student. This year has been extremely hard for myself to learn in a classroom environment. He has complained of headaches, stomachaches, and having a hard time learning. I met with his teacher in early October, and she mentioned that at times the class needs to just drop what they're doing and move outside. I later learned that these were class evacuations to remove the children from one or more children who have been having behavioral episodes. I also learned that there had been fights in my son's class and that the principal had to come in and discuss with the class what happened. My son also told me that the class was super loud. A child would kick the wall, another child would put his items on his desk, and it was just too wild. I purchased noise-canceling headphones and sent them to school to help him concentrate and expressed all these concerns with his teachers through email, and she forwarded them to the principal, Kelly. Just three days later, on a Wednesday, I received a call that my son had been involved in an incident during recess.
Julie, I am so sorry to interrupt you, but I'm really worried about student privacy because...
Oh, there's no children's names or anything.
She didn't mention the teachers they hired.
Only the prin, I could not say the principal. But I'm, I'm only speaking for my side of what's happening.
Thank you.
So at recess, he apparently was walking and kicking leaves up in the air alongside a group of children. One child pushed him down and jumped on his back. Once he got up, another child picked him up and threw him to the ground, and the whole group started hitting and slapping him. After all this, my son had to go find a teacher. There were no teachers around, and no teacher saw what happened. My son told me one child was sent home after school and not allowed to come the next day. I requested immediate meeting with the teachers and the school, and the meeting was two days later. When I arrived for the meeting, no one had anything to say, and nothing was presented to me at all. The only things I learned was that my son was hurt more than what I had heard before. And Principal Kelly implied that my son was hurt because he was persistent in wanting to play with this group of kids, that he lacked the skills to know when to walk away. My son is in third grade and has no IEP or special ed plan.
You're welcome. Please, you're welcome.
Goodness, I had a backup plan just in case. After this meeting, I never heard from county until I reached out the following Thursday. My son had been missing his friends and wanted to walk in the Halloween parade. He still didn't feel safe and even expressed that he was worried one student would be there and what should he do. I told him that if he didn't feel safe, to come straight back to me. But I was informed that administration said he could not walk in the parade as this was not a drop-in event. After talking to my son, he said, "I don't understand because we went to picture day and I didn't go for the whole day. It doesn't seem to make sense," he said. I emailed back with great disappointment and expressed how deplorable this situation was, especially with never receiving a safe reentry plan for my son. Principal Kelly called me mid-morning and said she must have dropped the ball or there was a disconnect. She assumed she was not, he was not coming back to school because she had received a request for my son's transcript. I expressed that my son was still a student at East Falmouth and I had not withdrawn him from Falmouth schools, that I was looking into other options, and when you apply for other schools, they request transcripts. She then said she had a reentry plan and would share it with me. In this reentry plan, she misspelled my son's name, which to me is not taking this seriously at all. To go back to the day I took my son in for pictures, we arrived and once inside, we were rushed to the gymnasium. And I was surprised and even said out loud to the secretary, "Oh, how I don't have to sign in or get a visitor sticker." When we ran it right into the gym and my son has pictures taken, we were leaving and we were rushed out a side exit next to the music room. After getting outside, it was brought to my attention that the same child who had hurt Wesley was having an episode in the hallway, and the hallways were in lockdown, and the principal was trying to reason with this child. I filed a police report on Sunday, October 27th, to have an officer look at the footage. This report was sent to the school resource officer, and after speaking with him Monday, October 28th, he asked me to call him back Thursday and remind him to look into this in case he got too busy. Which I did, and he said he was handing it over to a new school resource officer, and he would be going to the school Friday. Monday came, and I called the Falmouth Police Department to see if I could be assigned a regular officer as it had been over a week without any information. She said that it couldn't be transferred and that she would give him a call. He called me and said that he went to the school Friday and no one there knew how to pull up the surveillance video, and that he was going back today. It has been over a week, and I have not heard from him. After filing a complaint on October 30th with Desi about this situation, they had still not heard back from Falmouth Public Schools as of last Friday. The investigator was trying to again reach them and set up a phone conversation. I would also like to say that the superintendent and school committee were made aware of this incident and have also done the same. What hurts the most is watching my eight-year-old son be afraid to go to school. He's been afraid to do anything without me. He misses his friends and his teachers. He's not been back since he was assaulted by a group of kids on the playground. As you have just heard, the school has not made sure it would be a safe environment for him. I refuse to send my son back to school with one of the abusers still in his class. What is the point of making children wear no-guff t-shirts each year if the Falmouth district doesn't show support for children who are brutally bullied? You have shown me that my child does not matter.
Anyone else want to look on that? Not anyone on board. Oh, I'm sorry, I missed you. Okay.
That was difficult to hear, I'm just gonna preface it. Um, my name's Deanne Hoffman. I come to here tonight as a taxpayer, not as an employee. I ask you to consider many things tonight and base your decisions on facts and figures. I believe that over the past two months, we have been exposed to a plethora of presentations, meetings, and data. But I'd like to put emotions to one side for a moment and speak to some facts. Fact: Every one of these proposals is connected. They should not and do not stand separately from one another. Fact: Any consulting agency should be given a clean slate to work with. No preconceived notions, let them suggest to us what might make sense in our situation. Fact: No submission should be made for renovations of lawns as an educational building as there seems to be no restriction of use listed on the deed for this centrally-located town building. Fact: You should not be under any time constraint, other than it takes as long as it takes. Fact: You should, as members have asked, speak to other towns who have used Nezdek or are going through similar situations, like Sandwich, which is using Nezdek, and Barnstable with Tams. Fact: The allowed occupancy of a building and its usage are two very different things. Given how we keep and the needs of our population, building utilization should not be left out of any studies being done. To have collectively expended this much energy, thought, research, and discussion in such a short time is a testament to both the passion of our community members and the dedication of its elected officials and deputies. We are indeed all looking for the same result, and that is what's best for the children. We should not forget, however, that it behooves us to present a fair, reasonable, and financially sound proposal to our taxpayers as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm here speaking for myself as a parent of a child at East Falmouth School. I know I look old, but I actually have a son in East Falmouth School who's eight years old.
And you just have to tell them your name, so...
Emily Gold, thank you. And I am also here speaking for someone who could not be here because she was sick. So I'm first gonna read her email, her name is Jenna O'Brien. She has a son at East Falmouth School. We are here because we're concerned about the safety of our children at East Falmouth School. And she writes, she wants me to say that I want the safety and the way that issues are communicated at East Falmouth Elementary School to be discussed. The fact that there's been incidents that parents are not informed of. There have been problems with students, and parents find out days later or longer. She has not been able to find out incidents that happened with her child at school without... She finds it out from her child, not from the school. She, her child has been bullied by others, nothing has been done. When parents approach the school with concerns, it feels ignored. She's being told that it's being handled, but nothing seems to be being handled. Why aren't we being informed about what's going on with our school? Why are concerns not being heard? When does our children's safety, physical and emotional well-being matter instead of being brushed under the rug? So that's from Jenna O'Brien. For myself, I have a son in IEP at East Falmouth School, and I am concerned for his safety. When I'm in the parking lot of the school and I see children fighting, there's violence in the schoolyard, this is shocking to me. I never imagined this to happen. We are watching children beat each other up in East Falmouth School. You want to merge these schools, this school is out of control. We are not being told what's going on. My son is a shy child. My son could not handle being exposed to this violence. I want to know what's going on at East Falmouth Schools, and I want us to be heard.
Thank you. Any last comments?
My name is Amy Apple and Akotis. I'm a mother of two kids at East Falmouth Elementary. And I have nothing prepared. I'm just speaking off the cuff, so I'm sorry, but whatever. I think we're all here because at one point or another, like you're sitting in those seats because you wanted to, A, see a change in something that you didn't like, or you wanted to ensure that the kids of our community got a great education. Like, I don't think you'd be sitting here otherwise. Any single educator, any person that is involved, including me right now, I feel like I've been with, as a student, I was with the school, but also my kids are at the school nine years within the school system. One is currently at East. And I'm worried. I feel like this is my minor child that I'm sending to school, and I don't know what's going on. And luckily, my son is open, and he's emotionally intelligent, and he'll tell me what is happening at school. And I guess I'm shocked that I'm hearing it from him and not from someone that is an adult. And I feel like this lack of transparency is across the board. It's with our merging of schools. Like, these are just discussions we should be having first before taking strikes. If there's problems going on within the classroom, it shouldn't be my son coming and telling me. It should be someone reaching out and saying, "We're having issues. We have some challenges this year in this classroom, we're working on it." I, I didn't want to bring this up, but my son came home last week with a "I am a Clipper" card that said, "You're a Clipper because you advocated for yourself." And the way that he advocated for himself was there was another student who was screaming, I'm sorry.
All right, finish your thought, yeah.
Who was screaming within the classroom, and he didn't feel safe. And he asked to, to see if he could go sit out in the hallway. And like, that's not what it means to be a Clipper. Like, that should be handled by administration, adults. My nine-year-old, third grader, should not be the one who's like, "Hey, I don't feel right, I gotta go." And that is all. But like, we need to talk, we need to talk. We need communication everywhere, I feel. And that's all I have to say as a president.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any last comments? Okay, great, thank you, we'll move on. Next item is an update by our building needs task force reps.
At your place, this is the notes that were taken for the November 6th meeting, as well as the 10/23 meeting. Thank you, Sandy, for compiling this. Also, at your place is a draft for discussion purposes. From Bob Antonucci, we found the staff reports the superintendent and school committee on five proposed plans. Within the meeting, the task force discussed and agreed that we will not take action on proposals one and two until the school committee makes a decision and plan for taking West Point offline, moving forward within the task force. Reconfigure the grade structure serving five to eight, moving forward within the task force. And the task force agreed to all of the actions, oh, excuse me, as well. Draft proposal for the renovation of lawns, moving forward, and the task force agreed on all of the actions above.
I know, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I know everybody just got the, the handout. Is there any question about any amendments for the recommendations? Yes, yes, it was, yeah. All right, great. Thank you, guys, thanks for the report. Next up is the Presentation Discussion Act on Navigating the Future Together Proposals. I did have the opportunity to attend a great workshop over the weekend at MASCE on parliamentary procedures. And I'll, I'll read the recommendation that we have for how we need to proceed tonight. So on September the 5th, the committee voted unanimously to send a letter from the school committee and the superintendent that outlined the proposed plans and our intent to consider the plans and then solicit feedback. To take an action that would undo our vote of September 5th, for example, if we wanted to end any one of the proposals, we must do the following. We must first vote to rescind our September 5th vote in its entirety. And that's because you can't have two competing things that we voted on. If we have our vote that we unanimously supported on this, on the 5th, that says we're gonna have discussions about the proposals, we can't also have something that says we're not talking about certain proposals. We have to remedy that by using Robert's rules. So since we have such a broad topic, I shared this with the committee ahead of time and asked them to send any motions that they might be making. The first thing, though, has to be the vote on rescinding. So, does that make sense to everyone? Are we all clear on, on the rules? Okay, great. Uh, is there a motion to do that?
I make the motion that we rescind our vote on navigating the future together from September 5th in order to have a conversation about the need for feasibility study, is my reason.
Second.
Second is from Mike. Any comments from anyone in our discussion on whether or not to rescind?
I would like to make a comment.
Sure.
I think that the Building Needs Task Force has been tasked with a charge to do the research. And although the chair of that task force, of which I am a member, has suggested that we take no action at this time until we get the consultant report back and the feasibility study, I think pulling everything off the table is a little disrespectful to the people that have put their time in for the task force. And I mean that as respectfully as humanly possible. I understand, and I hear everyone, that one and two is not an ideal situation for a lot of people. And I've taken these last few months into consideration, and I've taken my charge rather seriously. And I think that the Building Needs Task Force has a job to do. Perhaps we could let them finish their job before we decide we're canning everything. I think that there's people on there that have dedicated their time and, you know, from the community, parents, staff members, community members have dedicated their time, have put a commitment into this district. And there's also a consulting company out there that we've hired that perhaps we should allow them to finish what they're doing. I don't think throwing the baby out with bathwater is a good idea currently. I do hear the proposals one and two, again, are not ideal for everyone. And that's why they are on hold until we have, to quote myself, "an informed decision." So I guess those are my comments surrounding rescinding the whole thing. I think throwing the baby out with the bathwater is just not a good plan. It is, it completely disrespects, again, as respectfully as possible, the people that put the work into the task force, the people that continue to put the work into the task force, the consulting, the, there's a lot of people hours involved here, and I don't think, I think that we should be, we should finish the job and hear from the consultant to hear an outside, unbiased opinion, what, where Falmouth lands, I guess.
Thank you. I can lay out why I think we should start over. I don't think we're throwing the baby out with the bathwater, I think we didn't draw a bath in the first place, and... Sorry, there's gonna be a couple metaphors, I'm sure. I don't see it as a disrespect to the hard work and volunteer time hours of the people on the task force. I see it as, it's honestly a disrespect to ask them to do this job without a full set of information. And what we have right now is a narrow scope set of proposals and without a feasibility study that looks at every single option that we could possibly have in our community, all of the challenges, all of the possible solutions. We haven't given a full set of criteria for them to look at, so it's not fair to ask them to do this job at the moment because they can't be held accountable for what they come up with because they haven't had an opportunity to have a fully informed start to the process. I also don't think that it's caving to pressure or backtracking or somehow a loss of anything to start over. When I've looked, I spent the last week looking at feasibility studies in other communities, and I looked at the West Parish School in Gloucester, I looked at Taunton, I looked at Wareham, I looked at what they've done in Sandwich, I went to Pennsylvania and looked at a district there, Austin, Texas. Every single place I looked at, the first step was a feasibility study. And part of the feasibility study is a visioning process where you really have this consulting team not just do architectural work, not just do a demography study or enrollment or capacity study. Those are like toolbox, here's another metaphor. I feel like the Nezdek study right now is like, we've asked, we're gonna spend $18,000 on a hammer, and we don't have the nails or the boards or the saw or any of the other parts of the toolkit. It's just one part of a feasibility study.
Point of order.
That sits on the side of it.
Chief, the speaker is delving into the particulars of the process. I think the motion on the table is to discuss the rescinding.
The rescinding.
Well, I think I'm trying to do, perhaps I'm not doing it as best as I could, but what I'm trying to do is explain why I feel like rescinding is not a capitulation, it's not a loss. It's starting over with a full set of information, which is what every other district that I looked at has done. It's the first step. I don't think it's a bad thing to go back and start over. And if that means rescinding, like as Kelly has said, we might end up with the same set of proposals at the end. But at least we could have a full set of information. And unfortunately, our wonderful team, who has, they've done a lot of work, and I really recognize that. I want to recognize and acknowledge the amount of work that Paul has put in to bringing these numbers together and that Lori and Doug have been, this plan together. and that Lori and Doug have been to plan together. But it's a hard, you can't present that information to the public because they're not demographers. We need to start again, the way every other district has started, from a feasibility study and work forward again, and we might end up in the same place with these same proposals. But it's not fair to Building Needs Task Force, or to ourselves, or to the community, to start from the place we're at. Oh, that's why I think it is.
Any other comments on whether to rescind?
Hello? Hello?
Your ceiling is beautiful.
But?
Sorry. Your ceiling is beautiful.
Okay, can I, am I allowed to talk now?
Please, go ahead.
Okay. Well, in my opinion, my time is worth a lot, too. And in the last two months, I have spent monumental energy backtracking, 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 looking for information that should have been along the way. So, I think if we put it at a clean slate, if we stop everything, and then as soon as we're done with this motion, we can say, okay, a new motion is to work on the Lawrence School, which is what the Building Needs Committee told us to put our energy. When they came to our meeting, if you remember, they said the word, "Take a hiatus from this stuff." And the thing they thought was good to put your energy on was the Lawrence School. I mean, maybe not grade configuration and all that, but just getting it ready for, you know, to submit for borrowing money. Anyway, I just think if we have a clean slate, it would be refreshing, we could start, we could all do our work along, and then whenever the report comes back, we could put all the stuff we've learned together. But going back and forth and back and forth is, has really been exhausting. Okay, thanks.
Thanks, sir. Mike.
Thank you. So, I am for this motion as I seconded it. This is just wiping this discussion off, and then immediately after, we can discuss those same five proposals. This does not kill it, this just pushes us to the next agenda item. So I think that we should focus to rescind, and then go to the next agenda item, the navigating the future and figure out what we all wanna do.
I would like to have the opportunity for the task force to complete their job, mainly because during my tenure on the school committee and the time I was even off, we've got a problem in this town, a major problem in regards to the decrease in enrollment. And as well as the fact that we are so far behind the surrounding communities in regards to what is offered to our preschool children. I'm feeling that the task force is taking, having the appropriate conversations. And whether these options are viable or not, they'll let us know based on conclusions they come to, and then bring to us. But I don't wanna kick it down the, kick the key down the lanyard anymore. This has been going on in the town thousands since the 90s in regards to having over 7,000 kids in the school system at that point. And they asked the task force to, all the way through there, and we added on to all of these buildings. But now we're down forty, forty-seven percent. And we have to take a look at our building alignment.
Thanks. Last comments? No, we're gonna make sure everybody gets to change their seats. Sorry. Margaret.
I'm gonna vote against the motion, I know that's not popular. And so when we vote against the motion, you should say why. First reason, this is what I've gone on this community for 20 years. I haven't lived here for 20 years, but this has been going on for 20 years. The whole notion that we should stop with nothing so we can build it seems to be confusing what our jobs are. We're the school committee, we're not the CEO of the school system. Okay? Not every, because we were at the, I was at the conference, and in fact, one of the school, local schools have just done this revision, and they said it is horrible. Everyone was miserable, everyone was upset. And then it happened, they didn't do a feasibility study, they did, they looked at all the information, they did it. And people can't believe how wonderful this is. One of the things that's very exciting to me is we've been talking about buildings for how many months now? But we have not talked about how this affects our children's education. And isn't that what we're about? Isn't that what we really care about, is what is best for your children's education, not what building? Yes, in fact, buildings are important. I'm not denying buildings. Buildings are important, but is our children's education, it should be foremost. And I've not heard one word about that yet, not one word from anybody. I wanna say, I'm sorry.
We're not going back. We're not going back and forth.
One order, you're addressing the.
Finish your thought, Margaret.
And the other, the. I lost my train of thought. If the people speak, I'll speak, you do, hopefully I can get it.
Any comment?
Can I make another comment?
No, we're still on first comments.
Okay, nobody said anything, I'll be quiet till they're done.
Madam Chair, my colleague, who just spoke, said that we need to speak if we were voting against the amendment, and I agree with voting against the amendment. First of all, Nezdek is highly guarded, and the proposal that they submitted is to review the four elementary schools. There's no specificity in that to review the East Ballot T-ticket merger. It's just a blanket looking at the four elementary schools. So it is not pre-stacked, the deck is not stacked, this is a blank slate. And this motion to rescind our vote that we took last week really has no practical effect on what we're, what we have already accomplished. As my other colleague, Ms. Estha, said, we have a dwindling student population. As much as people want to grasp onto other data points, we don't have a population to support the buildings in this town. We also want to preserve quality education. I believe that the superintendent has listened, she's modified her proposal, she's contracted with a consulting firm, and we need to let the Building Needs Committee give us the results.
You know, since this kind of process has started, you know, I felt like I was, I was on board without really having given it much thought. And I feel like throughout this process, and throughout the emails that we've gotten, conversations with people, you know, I kind of feel a little stupid for not asking some of these questions in the beginning. And I've had this unease in the pit of my stomach for, since this whole thing started. And I just wonder, you know, when we get through this, we decide to go through with this, with the amount of pushback and that we've had, and the amount of people that are upset with this, is it worth it? Is it? And I'm sorry, it's kind of hard to put my thoughts together. Will we be able to come out the other side of this and say, you know, this was, this was good? We did this right. Actually, we did this a way that was supported by the entire community. You know, I feel like right now we have an opportunity where we have a tremendous amount of community engagement. And we have an opportunity to move forward and do something that's really great for this town, and a chance to really collaborate with the town, with community members, to do something and to solve some of these problems. You know, I kind of picture in terms of the, in terms of an outside consultant, where we tell them our vision, you know, our vision is we want a universal free pre-k program, and we have declining enrollment, and we have, what do we have? Four elementary schools, a middle school, a junior high, and a high school, so seven buildings. I feel like we should go to a consultant and say, this is what we have, this is what we want. We have declining enrollment, do we, can we afford to keep all seven of our buildings? And if not, which ones are the best ones to give up to the town? And I feel like that's a conversation to also have with the town in collaboration to decide which building would be beneficial for both the school and the district, and the town. And I'm just not sure, if it's going to be painful, is it going to be worth it? Even if it's just for a short period of time, would it be worth it to go through this, to push through right now? When we're, I think we're all trying to find the same goal, where we have this, where we want the same goal, and what's best for our kids. And I'm just, I'm just not sure. I don't have that feeling that this is at least not the best approach to it.
Can you clarify whether you're speaking in favor of or against?
I'm in favor of the motion to rescind, please.
Thanks, I just wanted to make sure I'm still going.
Sorry, sorry, I'm probably spinning my wheels there.
No worries. So, pardon me, I haven't spoken yet.
I'm sorry.
No worries. So I, I am not in favor of rescinding our previous vote. I think, you know, I do think that we have learned some, some interesting and useful information since then. But I agree with the statement that I don't think it has any, I don't think it has any real purpose to rescind our, our previous action because we have not voted to do any of the proposals. We are still in the part where the Building Needs is taking this on, where we're still considering it, where we're hiring outside consultants to dive deeper into the data. And, and I don't see, I don't see what purpose it would solve. And I do really value the, the work of the Building Needs Task Force that they've done so far. And I value what they gave us for our meeting tonight that says, look, we think that we should pause and take no action on one and two, and we should continue to move forward on three, four, and five. And I value that opinion. I also, I, I understand that argument that there might be things out there that we haven't considered. But I do think that our administrative team probably kicked a lot of those things around already and have already rejected some of them because they're not feasible. And so, I think that staying the course, as I've said a million times before, and I will continue to say, I trust that you set up a process and you follow the process. And it has not led me wrong. It's sometimes very messy and bumpy along the way, but I trust the process that we set out on, and I would like to see it. All right, now we'll go to second comments, and then we're gonna vote. Mike.
All right, so first things first, on September 5th, we never voted on navigating the future. We voted on releasing the timeline of community events to discuss navigating the future. We have never had a formal vote.
We never voted on the timeline.
We nev, we voted on.
Okay, hold on, hold on. At that meeting, we voted on the content of the letter and to release a joint letter from the superintendent and the school committee, that's what we voted on. The content of the letter was all five proposals.
With a listening session and the timeline of where those would be. We voted on the timeline of the proposals being released. We did not vote unanimously on the proposal. Because I sat right there, and I said to you, as soon as one parent says something, I am gonna fight this tooth and nail. That's what I said. I am very upset that two of our four goals are transparency, communication, and data-driven decision-making. And these proposals have neither. I'm also concerned that I have tried everything in my power to stop this. And every time I do, there are little tweaks to the agenda to stop me. Last meeting, I asked you several times to put on the agenda, vote to stop Prop 1 and 2. And the agenda item was to extend. I made two motions, ignored, and when I made the amendment, I was told it was against the agenda. If you're trying to show these folks, and the other thing, as far as children's education, these people have better stuff to do. They don't wanna be here. This isn't about buildings, it's about all of these people and their kids who come here every single meeting. And people are like, oh, we did all the work. It's disgusting to all these folks, to me, to everyone in this town who cares. And last meeting, a member asked for anyone to reach out with positive information about this. Zero. We got zero information. We've gotten dozens of emails from these folks and people at home saying that they're against this and talking about their children, matters will affect their education. This is not transparent, there is no data. Two of our four goals, this is, I am for this motion to rescind this, and we should start from scratch with actual data and listen to the public.
Terry, you want to say something else?
Yes, I wanna emphasize that nobody that I heard asked to rescind this vote wanted to stop trying to find an answer for declining enrollment. Nobody said that. It's just that, instead of spending time holding on to these proposals in the back of our mind, I, that the reason I would like it to be blank is because there's two major things, too, that we haven't discussed, that I think need to be discussed in this process. And one of them is redistricting. And when have we ever touched on that? That should be part of the discussion, too. So, while things are stopped for a while, why can't we look at that? And also, I wanna say again, how many kids are going to be in our preschool? To me, that's a very important thing. We should be, as Katrina said, looking at Barnstable, looking at Mashpee. These people have preschool, looking through how many numbers they have or something. So there's other energy that could be spent in the overall project, which I think everybody on our committee knows, that we have declining enrollment, we have to work on it. But, so, just having things neat and clean, we're gonna put in all the energy we look at, I want it ready to reconsider. We're not saying we don't have a problem, we don't wanna deal with it. I'm just gonna say again, I personally have spent two months going backwards trying to dig up data that wasn't there to begin with, and it's just exhausting. So, a clean slate, again, that's my vote, I mean, that's my suggestion. All right, goodbye.
Thanks. Okay, don't, don't leave. Thanks, Terry, any last, anyone wanna make a second comment? Katrina?
I think maybe what's missed here is that this is an opportunity. It's not, I think there's like a negative connotation to saying we wanna rescind our vote to release these proposals to the public. It's not a loss, it's an opportunity to give the Building Needs Task Force a full set of cards and to give them all the information because there's opportunities and options that are not in these five proposals. And so they can't consider them because they're not in there. If you can't consider something, then you're, you're missing a piece of the puzzle. And I, I know I just keep saying that again and again, but it is an opportunity to create a vision. We all agree that we have a problem. But the conversations about why Morse was chosen to give up, why Lawrence was chosen to renovate, those are conversations that I was not part of, and there's no documentation of them. So it's very difficult for me to understand the pros and cons. Why was this projected off the table? What led you to these five proposals? I understand that the origins are great, and, you know, on a surface level, it'd be so much more relaxing for me to just be like, this looks great, wonderful, let's just go with it. But it's not our due diligence, and so the opportunity is there for us. And I heard Kelly say, what purpose would it serve? The purpose it would serve is if Lawrence is so expensive to renovate, and the reason we're renovating it is because of the size of the auditorium, it can't be duplicated, and the auditorium is leaded by the town, why would we renovate that as a school? We don't need a huge auditorium for middle school. Perhaps we could make a state-of-the-art building that's very new. We love Lawrence, and I don't, I don't wanna say that, I don't wanna renovate a huge historical building, but it might not be in the best interest of our school students to renovate an old school. That might be in the town's best interest. Would it be a good idea to put the preschool into the high school? Would it be a good idea to put the preschool into the high school where there's empty space and a lot of vacancy? These are ideas that are not on the table. There's already a pre-K program at the high school. That's just two examples. I'm not saying that they are correct or not correct. But if we don't have a feasibility study at the outset of the project, we're limiting ourselves and we don't have as many opportunities to look at the huge big picture and find the best solutions. And also for the taxpayers, if we're gonna ask them to spend a hundred and thirty million dollars renovating Lawrence or whatever the number is. We wanna be sure, and I wanna be sure from transparent data that is selected in front of all of us by a third party contracted firm, that that is the correct thing to do, to spend that amount of taxpayer money to ask the town to renovate that building for a school. At the moment, I don't have data or documentation or anything to support that. And like Terry said, I've spent the last couple of months just researching and backtracking and trying to like look up articles from the past. And it is frankly exhausting. I think we all feel kind of exhausted. And the missed opportunity is that this should be a joyful process. This should be an exciting process, it should be invigorating. We have a big opportunity to make things better and in conjunction with the town with a feasibility study, we really could find the best answer. And I can't, I can't say it more than that. I just am so excited that if we start with a feasibility study, we have everything we need. Nobody's gonna question that data because it's not internal, it's totally transparent. It's a professional company. It gives us good foundation and then we can move forward to solve these issues because the declining enrollment is real and the cost of keeping all these buildings open is real. And we can't probably afford to do that, but I wanna see it. I want us all to see it, I want the town to see it, and I want the Building Needs Task Force to be given the respect they deserve, which is to have all the information that they need irrefutably put in front of them in a way that we can all trust.
Thanks, Melissa. Second comments?
Right, here you go. Uh, and again, I know this is unpopular, but I will go there. And actually, a couple of things you said are actually very true. The first thing that's true is that a school committee should have had a retreat and should have really listened to what the project was about and had more information. All of these questions that are coming up now are quarterbacking. You know? Um, and so that's a concern to me. I agree absolutely with Chris, that we should have a serious conversation with the town. But they do not wanna have a town, a conversation with us. So that is off the table, okay? Um, the idea that this should be a joyous process, if you've done research, I'm not sure there is any school system in the whole United States that found this as a joyous process. It is, no, well, it's, no, it's very, and I, and I think this is an opportunity. I have always said, this is a proposal. And some of the things, well, well, let's, let's clear the slate and make it new. Why don't we have children at our high school? Why don't we not do Morse? Why don't we, we could come up with all kinds of proposals. This is the proposal that we work on. This is not a plan. This has been something I've said from the very beginning. You have to have something you work with and make discussions about. Instead of saying, let's just open it up, let's leave it blank, and let's start from nothing. And so I really, um, and I know this is unpopular, you know? And I'm not grandstanding, I'm just saying, I'm sorry. I really do care about the children here and their educational process and I have read every email. And I really care that buildings provide the best environment for our children. And that's what I care about. And so in conscience, I can't say that a proposal should just be dropped off and we start with all kinds of new ideas.
Uh, Chair, if you could, right here it says, the chair may accept comments from the public, comments following committee's decision.
Yeah, the chair, everybody has to have a chance to.
He spoke twice earlier.
I, I know, I know.
I'm just talking about asking if the public can speak after our discussion.
Um, so I've got Chris, Glenda, Sue and Melissa and myself, if anyone wants to make a second comment. You don't have to, but I'm throwing it out there as an opportunity.
Yeah, so may I say?
Do you have anything you wanna add?
I just have a clarifying question.
Yeah.
Uh, when we, um, when the consulting company comes in and looks at the four elementarys, would, uh, redistricting, could that be part of the conversation? Do you think that that would be, was that part of the conversation? Did you have any conversation with them or was it all through Dr. Inti?
I was, I was with her actually, he did all the talking.
He did. Was redistricting of the four elementarys part of that conversation?
We were careful not. He didn't give, yeah, we didn't discuss anything that we've done. We did not wanna give them any direction as to what to do, but, you know, it was, it was wide open. So they, we come back with that, that recommendation. And it's part of what they do as an organization as well.
Okay, so, Sue, go ahead.
Um, redistricting is part of the conversation that we come up with the task force.
Okay, so does that help, Katrina?
Not, not in the way that I think you're hoping it will, I, I, I feel like every time I say something to you, there's like a snicker. And honestly, I feel like I'm killing myself. So I'm sorry.
So, no, we're not, we're not going back and forth between the tables. Okay, so we're gonna,
everyone has to have a chance to speak twice before a, a third go-round if, if they were.
We should be official.
And also, we need to address the chair and not members directly.
I agree.
We need to, um, use titles, colleagues, but we do not address each other as chairs, as, uh, by, by name.
We do not. You can tell we went to the same training class. We're both working on it.
Okay.
Um,
I'm not quite.
Yeah, finish your question.
Okay. Um, the comment that was made about the, uh, auditorium potentially not meeting space. The town uses the Lawrence School auditorium for town meeting. And those of us that are on town meeting do remember that when it was tried to be held at the high school, it didn't fit. The town meeting body didn't fit. So while I appreciate, um, the conversation about a potential new state-of-the-art building, here we are with a family personality thing that, in my opinion, I don't think that that would work, kind of thing. Um, Chris, a couple of things that Chris said kind of spoke to me about, um, feeling stupid for not asking questions and having a pit in your stomach for the last two months. Same, I feel the exact same way. I feel like I haven't asked enough questions. However, I feel like although there have been excellent questions, uh, brought up by the, by the public that I have since asked, um, as well as other committee members have asked, um, at times, it feels like we're not working together. And I find that extraordinarily frustrating. Um, I again, look forward to what the Building Needs has been charged with to complete that task and go from there, I guess is what I want to say. I have one and two on hold. I just, I just wanna finish a thought. I just wanna finish what we're supposed to be doing. I want an informed decision, I wanna hear from the consultant. I wanna, you know, have conversations with the Building Needs Task Force after the Nezdech comes in and gives us their recommendation. And maybe at that time, then we come back and have this conversation again, I don't know. I feel like we're like ripping the band-aid slowly, slowly, and I hate that. Um, but I, I just, I just wanna really make sure that we're doing, um, that we're having an informed decision. And by shutting it down, it just doesn't feel like it's an informed decision. And I'll say that, um, with trepidations and, um, I don't want anyone to think that I'm not hearing them or, um, I just wanna make sure that I'm doing my due diligence.
Glenda and Chris, do you have a final thought or are you passing?
Um, yeah, so, I'm not sure, I just, um, your motion on the table is to rescind the vote that we took at our previous meeting. Some of the conversation is from the point of view that we are voting, if, if we wrote this down, to go ahead with proposals of navigating the future. We are not voting, that, that we are not, um, supporting that. We are supporting doing research, contracting with a consultant, working with the Building Needs Task Force, and then making our informed decision. So I, I'm, I'm a little concerned that there's lack of clarity on some of the comments about what exactly we are doing. The motion on the table is to rescind the vote that we took last week. That's it.
Not last week, September.
To, to, to that.
September.
September. September, yes, September. Yeah, I appreciate the clarification.
Oh, okay, so, I'm sorry, so let, let me, um, back up. We did not vote to go ahead with the proposal. We voted to send out a letter and to have forums.
Yes.
So the, we did not, uh, we're, what we are proposing is to go along with the research. And that's, that's where we are. We're not, we're not posturing to go ahead with this. We're researched, in the research mode, in research.
Chris?
Yeah.
I, I think for me, it's more a matter of in, in terms of just talking about the process, in terms of, um, you know, if this is the only consultant that, and I don't know if this is part of have the Building Needs Task Force discussion, if, you know, we get to define part of the scope, if we get to, you know, put out multiple bids for a proposal. Um, just from reading the initial one, I feel like there's a lot more information that we're looking for or, or that some of us wanna see. And I'm not sure if that, and, and I guess it is just kind of trusting to the process or not having a full understanding of the process. For me, um, you know, I'm, I'm kind of not sure if, 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 if there's still an opportunity, depending on how this vote goes, if we can present the consultant with what our, our end vision is, where we have a universal free pre-K program. We have, you know, do we, do we have, um, do we not have a need for all seven of our schools, right? And have the consultant determine, looking at all the factors, you know, everything in terms of town engagement, town needs, district, school district needs, student needs, um, figuring out, okay, you don't need all seven of your schools. These are the schools based on our research that you don't need. And then to have, so it wouldn't be really starting from scratch. It'd be starting from what an independent consultant would come up with in terms of, okay, if you want a universal free pre-K program, uh, building or, or whatever, where, where could we put that? Where could that go? And I would assume they would have the expertise to come up with, this is where we think this would go. So we would be starting off with, these are their suggestions, their proposals. And then we would essentially analyze those and vote on that. Um, so I guess that, you know, I'm not sure of, is moving, moving forward from this point, are we just looking at this one proposal with this kind of limited scope? Or do we have the opportunity to expand this into something bigger? Into, into putting out a scope to multiple bidders? And, and really, really try to get a lot of data to kind of make a really vulnerable decision? I guess is my question.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'm gonna pass on my final comment. We're gonna stick to Robert's rules, we all spoke twice. And, um, answer to your question, Mike, we took the comment at the top of the meeting. And we're not taking it now.
Could I, could I request you ask if the, if the folks here would like to speak? As you may, if you'd like to. And I'm requesting that you let these folks speak.
And I am gonna decline because I said at the start of the meeting, we were gonna take public comment on navigating the future out of order so that people didn't have to stay through the meeting. That's what we, this is.
I moved to close the debate.
Okay. Uh, can I, is there?
Can I just tell one thing?
One thing, one thing on that.
I moved to, the motion on the table is I moved to close the debate and we need to vote on that and, um, pass that by two-thirds. So we would.
Glenda, I think, can I just, one thing, I'm sorry, Glenda, because school committee members.
I moved to close the debate, so we have to do.
I wanted to have another motion and that's why I brought up all that stuff. You didn't know what my motion was.
We can't do the, we can't have another motion until we close the motion.
No, I know.
So if there's a motion to close debate, is there a second?
Sorry.
Okay, it has to pass by two-thirds, all favor closing debate, which is not gonna matter because we were closing debate anyway, but it's fine. Um, say aye.
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 Question. Point of order, does that need to be called?
Uh, doesn't need to be, we can. If you would like to request it, yeah. Uh, but I show hands, so if I need count. One, two, three, four. It does not pass, so debate is not closed. However,
I'm sorry, like, I, I'm so confused right now. Like I, there's so much happening.
So let me, let me step back and, okay. So we, there was a motion to end the debate on the motion. And so we took that up, it did not pass, the motion did not carry, that's fine. We still need to vote on the original motion that we were discussing, which is to rescind the vote from September 5th. That's where we're at.
Can I request again that parents can speak?
One second.
Thank you.
Does that?
So Glenda made a motion to,
Just stop, stop.
Stop talking about it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, but that failed, so we're still moving on. We still have to vote on the main motion of, um, rescinding.
Rescinding, okay.
Town or in town meeting, then it'll be like that, because it's the exact same thing.
Thank you, Chair.
Yeah.
Can I offer a clarification?
Sure.
I think there's a little misunderstanding of what I'm trying to accomplish here. I don't want to scrap the proposals, I don't want to shut them down. I don't want to have a free-for-all. I don't want to do any of these bad-sounding things. The thing I would like to do, if we can get to the next stage, if we say that we're not bound by these five from that original September 5th vote, vote, it would open us up to be able to have another motion saying, can we now start the process of securing a feasibility study to address the future of the entire district, including but not limited to a physical needs assessment of all current buildings, a study of enrollment projections, future housing developments, study of capacity, demographic analysis, operational impacts, costs, and community impacts. That is what we all want and it's what Nezdech is doing. The problem with Nezdech is that it's limited by the fact that we are only allowing them to look at our five proposals. And then within that, only to the K through the five.
They're not looking at proposals.
They're not looking at proposals, but their specifications of what they're looking for are limited. And I don't want to shut the process down, I want us to carry on. But I want us to start with a feasibility study that does bring a feeling of, um, goodwill and informed consent to the discussion. I don't want to backtrack or delete anything. I just, there's like a misunderstanding that I'm trying to start from scratch somehow, I'm not. I'm trying to start from a better place than Nezdech can help me get us.
And the issue that we have is that on the advice of council and MASC, in order to stop the process that we're in, we have to rescind that vote before we can do anything else, which is where we are right now.
Which doesn't mean we're like against the proposals.
I'm, I'm just saying that, you know, that I'm, I raised this, I took the exact language that Mike sent me for the topic for tonight's agenda. I ran it past legal counsel, I talked to parliamentary experts at MASC, I got their advice on how we have to move forward, and that is what we're doing. Mike?
We never voted to approve this proposal in this early September meeting. We voted on only the timeline of the community hearings. Therefore, rescinding a vote that never happened makes more sense. And I will ask again, I will request that the parents get to speak, they're here. This is your kid's education right here, let them speak.
So we did not vote only on a timeline in September 5th. We voted, you seconded it. It was a unanimous vote to, on the content of the letter, we went back and forth, we worked Smith, we talked about all the proposals. We agreed that they were gonna come in conjunction between the school committee and the superintendent because we were all in this together. That is what we voted on September 5th and that is why we have to rescind it.
I agree with you. We voted on the content of the letter and we voted on the public hearings. We never voted on proposals one through five.
They were in the letter.
We voted on the content of how the letter was written. I did not vote, no one voted on proposals one through five moving forward. No one voted on proposals 1 through 5 moving forward.
Okay. But I'm gonna just read it to you.
Can I ask again if the parents can talk?
You, you can, but we need to settle our discussion. We don't move to anything else until.
I'm gonna keep on asking.
You don't need to keep asking. In the letter, it says, we agree the time has come to address the letters in a thoughtful, data-driven way with input from the community specifically. And then it goes into what those things are in the months ahead. Oh wait, hold on, where's the one? Nope, I'm on the wrong page. No wonder I can't find it. Sharing five proposed plans that we will be discussing over the next two months with staff, family, and the broader community. The, and then it lists out what those plans are. That is what we voted on.
We voted on discussing them. We never voted on approving those proposals.
We're not voting on approving them. We're still not.
So why, so what, then why, why? What are we rescinding? We're rescinding the vote on the letter?
On what the five proposals are. We have to go back to cover.
But we never voted to approve any of those proposals. We voted on the letter.
When we resolve this, you're welcome to challenge the chair on what we actually voted on.
Can I ask a third question?
Okay.
Let the folks talk.
We are not gonna let the folks talk. They talked at the start of the meeting as we discussed at the start when I said, is there any objection to allowing public comment at the top of the meeting? Then we held public comment on navigating the future at the top of the meeting. We are not handling it now. We're voting. It's gonna be a hand vote because I'm not gonna be able to count. The motion is to rescind our vote from the September the 5th meeting. All in favor of rescinding the vote, say aye and raise your hand. To rescind the vote from September 5th. All in favor of rescinding the vote from September the 5th. It's, uh, oh, it has to be a roll call. I'm sorry, I forgot Terry's here. Uh, roll call. Terry, will you start us off on the roll call?
Yes, yes. Rescind it.
May I have a yes?
May I have a yes?
Augusta, no.
I think yes.
Let's keep going.
Go on, no.
No.
Welch, no. So the motion does not carry. We're not rescinding the vote from September the 5th. All right. Moving on to the next item. Uh, update on the capital plan. No, if you get your more than welcome to ask for a brief recess? Um, there's a request for a brief recess. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Parliamentarian.
And when we can actually start. So the only other thing I would add is that there were no questions about any of the capital items at that recent meeting, which I think bodes well for us. But if there are questions, attend me and we'll answer them then. Any questions about the process on the capital items?
I just remember that there was a funding request for the WEF Morse back in February, and we were maybe going to hear about it around now, but that's not on the warrant. We haven't heard back about that?
No, we actually pulled the MSBA application in light of the plans that we got.
And it wouldn't be a capital item anyway, because that would have to go to the referral, you know?
Okay.
But it flips it so much around. Yeah. Something that big would have to go to the voters to approve.
Okay.
Last question.
All right. Thanks, Paul. Next up is update by Student Services.
So I have a couple of updates for you. First of which is the health fair. So everyone will notice that precinct flyer in your handout that was made by the nurses. So this year there's going to be a district health fair on March 27th from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the high school. And our hardworking nurses, who we have a couple representatives here tonight, have planned this educational event, which is going to be open to all students and families. And you can see there on the flyer, there's going to be opportunities for people to learn more about our community partnerships, resources that are available. And there will actually be some opportunities for the attendees to participate in some presentations, things on concussions and EpiPen training, sun safety, nutrition. There's also a plan to hopefully have some support for families who need to either update or put the information into Power School for some of the emergency information plan. So we're hoping everyone saves the date for this fun educational event. And we thank the nurses for putting this together. It's obviously a huge project, but we're all very happy. I'm so excited.
I've been to one in other districts, and there are many second ones.
Another update, we did a training about a week ago, the first of two on psychological first aid. So we had about 24 staff members attend the training and a few community members. So a representative from Falmouth Human Services and the two social workers who are part of the Falmouth Police Department. So we had a training actually similar to this about five years ago from the same organization, Riverside Trauma Center. And it was a great opportunity for some of the veteran staff, maybe like myself, who actually did this training five years ago, but for, you know, obviously we have a lot of new staff. So a lot of the information that was covered is part of our comprehensive emergency management plan. And we have the second part of the training is tomorrow, and that's the post-traumatic stress management. And then last but not least, I was just going to update everybody on the communication goal, which is one of the district goals that we're working on with the principals. Our instructional leadership team met about a week or so ago, and kind of just went through the updates and progress we've made on the communication goal. So the consistent use of the messages to the staff and families. If anybody's attended some events, they are using the QR codes with one to two questions. So if you've been to an open house or meet your teacher night, they're using it at the band concerts and fundraisers. So that's something new to try to improve the two-way communication. We're really looking at those automated messages. So using the feature of the connected message that's not only, you know, phone calls or emails, but also the text messages as reminders for communication. And then talking points, which we've talked about a lot over the past couple of years, but this is also turning into a tool that teachers are using for, not only for families that might need a translation, but for the entire class to keep that communication, lines of communication open. So then another important thing that we're also looking at is just making sure when we do send out messages through that connection feature, that we're looking, you know, to export the file and make sure that the information that we do have is correct for families. So, you know, making sure that it does really get to the correct phone numbers and emails. Basically, so the little updates from Student Services.
Yeah, we need a fresh market.
I was going to ask that question with the question.
Yes, that's like the fresh market.
Cool.
Yes.
Mike.
One question about the fresh market. Are there any more coming up? And then my second question is, can you send that phone message out like two days early? Because I always get it, and I'm like, oh, I can't make it.
So I'm glad you brought that up.
That's wonderful.
Not everybody wants the phone message.
I know. All the phones go off.
No, no. People call here and say, can you take me off of the phone message? Oh, you're running everything.
You tell them my feelings, guys.
Okay, I'm going to say that I'm doing that, yes. I can certainly do it two days before.
Thank you.
That's no, that's no. Not calling it off.
We were in one meeting where everyone's phone went off at the same time. We're like, must be fresh market in this place.
Yes, calling me schedule a meeting.
Well, we do have one more set up for this school year. And then there has been feedback, people would, in the community would like to have the fresh markets be at different times and locations. And I've talked to Karen Delaney, and it's difficult. You know, they're, they have a limited number of volunteers. And so a lot of the volunteers want to be finished, you know, their day by like quarter or five. So for people who are working, it's obviously difficult to get to a fresh market if it's all cool stuff by then. But they're really working hard at the service center to try to come up with options, to increase options. So maybe the school committee will have to be the volunteers one night. Okay. Some weightlifting is going on.
That's all right, we can handle it. You got problems with it. Any questions, Christine?
When is the next question?
I'll get that date even a second.
Okay. All right, we'll come back to you.
Yeah.
All right, thanks so much. Next up is.
Hello?
Oh, sorry, Terry, I'm so sorry.
No, 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 I'm going to leave the meeting because I'm over here in Seattle, Washington. So I have some things to do. So I just wanted to get on the record how late I stayed at the meeting, so.
You got it, 7:58, we appreciate you.
Okay.
Thank you. Bye, Terry. Oh, right, 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 right. She just probably like, no, I'm not there, it's only four o'clock. Okay. Sandy, just wave at me when you find the date. Next up is our presentation on MCAS. Let's take one. Okay.
Do you want the date?
Yes, go for it, thanks.
December 5th at 3:45 at the East Falmouth Elementary School. So that's the third and last one for this year. Well, for, I think I'll be meeting with Karen for the new school year, and we'll see what we can do for the spring.
Great, thanks, December 5th. All right, MCAS. All right.
So this is our annual look at achievement and growth data. So I'm going to begin with English language tracks. So when we look grade by grade, we begin testing grade three, it continues each year through grade eight. ELA testing skips grade nine, and then students test at grade 10. So you can see the darker color bar is Falmouth, the lighter, I guess, pink muted maroon color, you want to see it? Is the state, is Massachusetts. So you can see across there, third, fourth grade are just under the state. And then after that, you can see that we pull ahead in each year, and then grade 10, we're going to speak about in a second. But relative to grades three and four, I think some of the key pieces for us to kind of think about in our instructional response is that we have changed our literacy, our early literacy screeners beginning this year. And we have a high quality instructional materials, HQIM, that's the language and the protocol that the Department of Education gives us for evaluating new curriculum. And we're in the process this year of evaluating a new curriculum that we'll be looking to put into place beginning next year for ELA specifically, and responding not only to our students' needs and shifts, both in the research and appropriate quality materials, but also to the data that you see here. And so not only are we using that process from the Department of Education, but we're also using their curate tool, which is the curriculum rating system that is developed in part by the Department of Education and consultants that they work with. But then they recruit teachers who are currently in practice across Massachusetts public schools. And together they review and rate the curriculum. And so things have to have a certain level of rating in order to enter into our conversation. So right now we're looking at four different programs. And that's for foundational literacy up through grades five and six right now. So we're looking at the grades five and six. When we drill a little bit deeper than looking at all students by grade, the way that the first of these reports is generated is that it looks at grades three through eight together as a cohort. And this is how we look at it each year. So the first step is looking at a comparison of all students. And then we look at our three most commonly reviewed student groupings, low-income students with disabilities. And we can see that there are some shifts here. And again, that process that I just mentioned, our curriculum review, and then our new screening tools that we have allow us to have the ability to tailor and look specifically at standards where students may need some additional attention instead of looking broadly across concepts. And we can dig into each standard and then respond there. And so same in looking at grade 10. So again, it repeats from the first slide, the all students on the far left. And then you can see each of the three student groupings, low-income students with disabilities and high needs. Low-income students this year for Falmouth, we gained 6% of students moving and exceeding, so pulling ahead of the state as compared to the previous year. Students with disabilities are still performing below the state. High needs increasing by 7% and closing the gap relative to the state. Same here in terms of some of the considerations we have in reviewing and drilling into the specific standards and responding, looks a little different as opposed to the attention to some of the curricular resources. We're using some of the screening tools that we have and some of the lesson resources we have for personalized learning plans for students. And the primary platform we're using is called No Writing Ink. And we've been using it for the past few years. And so one of the things we did was we isolated some of the standards that students are working on in their personalized learning journey relative to some of the standards that we saw represented in the gaps here, and looked at the students' performance over time. And our students are making growth, they're just not making growth at the same rate as some of their peers in the state. And that was one of the things that we looked at for this cohort, making sure that they are making significant growth or moderate growth each year. While it may not show up here, it is showing up for them over time. So same here, this is, this is that other view. So achievement, when we talk about achievement, we talk about, we look at a test with different cohorts of students each year on that grade test. When we look at growth, it's the same group of students each year comparing their progress across grades. So growth does not report until grade four because they need their grade three and their grade four test to make that comparison. So across the board, we largely see moderate growth. And we do see grade seven, and then in two instances, grade four and grade 10 for students with disabilities, low growth. And again, responding to that through the work that we're doing in selecting new curriculum and responding to the personalized learning.
So can we do our questions on English language and the progress or math? Are there any questions on the English language data? Oh, okay, it's just me then, sorry. Oh, Chris, I've got one too. Okay, good.
For the, kind of the achievement, so like for like third and fourth grade, is there a way of separating that by school? Like to see what the, what it looks like for each of the elementary schools? And, and just out of curiosity, I don't know if there's a way of kind of, if it's too granular, like checking it by student, like as they go from third to fourth, and then they enter fifth grade where they're kind of combined with the rest of the population. Is there a way of tracking each individual student's kind of progress just to kind of see how they compare with, especially at the elementary school level? Like to see how they compare with their peers?
Do teachers have that ability, is that what you're saying?
Or in general, like? Yeah.
Yes. Yeah. Our, when our teachers receive data, they have the ability to see their current students in front of them for that year, how they had performed, and then they can see their previous year's students and how they had performed in the spring. So they can see that impact, but also plan for the current one.
Okay.
So that makes sense.
Yeah, yeah. Is that part of like the new curriculum or the current curriculum, like was that?
Those are some of the resources we've been able to work with our IT team, just as a way to provide the data.
So my question, I think it's weird that we lumped three through eight, but then we look at 10 all by itself. So why do we do that?
So that's one of the ways that the state writes the report. Because at each grade level, if you don't have at least 20 students in a particular student grouping, we can't talk about it publicly. And so you would see some years we could talk about some grades.
Right.
And we can't consistently, yeah.
Okay.
So to me, we use this one to make sure we can capture a report on student groupings every year.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And this data our administrative directors have.
Okay. And then my second question is, I just want to make sure I understand what we're doing. Because the 10th grade is concerning, especially for our students with disabilities. So if I heard you right, you were saying that teachers are going in to make sure that students are still growing, and they're not growing at the same pace as the state. But then overall, what else are we doing besides just? Because it's encouraging to know that people are, that students are growing, of course. We want them to be learning stuff. But if we need to not just be learning, we need to be catching up. So what else are we doing?
So, so there's two parts. One is that the not meaning number is lower than the publicly presented threshold. So I want to be careful how, how much we talk about some of those numbers. But we are responding not only in the curriculum and the personalized learning plan, but we're really working to make sure that we understand all the influences and impacts. One of them being chronic absenteeism, right? And so working and talking about that. There's a relationship there to how we approach credit recovery, how we approach prioritizing time that students have, for example, in Clipper time. And then also looking at when a student may have a significant absence in their returning, how we're helping them to prioritize their learning and not feel like it's just overwhelming coming back at them. But chronic absenteeism is, is one of the bigger challenges that we're trying to work through with that. Then also maintaining the personalized learning plan, where we can set up personal lessons for students that's not credit recovery, but responds to their specific skills and needs.
Okay.
If I may. Along with Chris's question, I am very concerned about the student with IEPs in our district. I mean, there's only one category where their EEP score is greater than the state average. So as far as the focusing just on student disabilities, could we break that down by elementary school? Because I think that would be very interesting data to have as we move forward to see if we are serving every student in our district the best we can, and if those four elementary schools lose discrepancy, and why that might be, and how we can address that. I'm just looking for the breakdown of the IEP students in the elementary schools. I think Chris wanted more.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I mean, yeah, taking into consideration those numbers.
Is there an effect on, on these scores for our school system when a family decides not to allow their child to participate in the MCAS?
So when we're looking at the entire aggregate, if, because there is no opt-out, Massachusetts is very clear there's no opt-out. It's an exercise of refusal. So when that happens, they count that student as not tested or a student will show up and then not meaning expectations. Because they were eligible to test. We don't have a reason for them not to test. I mean, I understand the parent or the child may refuse, but we don't have a permissible reason.
Right.
We can't report them as medically excused or something of that nature. And so therefore, they're expected to test, so they generate a non-meaning score. So it can, it shows up in our, in our aggregate counts. And if the student is also a member of one of the student populations, it'll show there too.
Okay. Just follow up. I kind of think we need to know about that, like how many there are. If that's a lot, that's going to skew, it's going to skew everything, I would think, right? If we have a high percentage of kids that don't take it. I would like to. Melissa.
I would like to know that also, that isn't why I, but I thank you for that. Also, how does the vote of last week affect this moving forward? And I'm purposely asking that very broadly because I want all of the information. Don't hold anything back.
So as of right now, it has not, the law has not gone into effect. So we're waiting for, for that to happen. I think that, you know, just from the initial information that they sent to us, which is pretty brief, and then the call that Dr. Dora and I were able to listen on with the commissioner today, what they want right now is they want to know what our questions are, how we are sort of prioritizing our concerns or our needs in our district so that, you know, as they figure out when it will go into effect, they can give us information and I think be able to prioritize that. We still have to have a competency determination, so we have to decide, right? We have to wait for their guidance to determine what that will look like for us. So right now, they're advising that we continue as we normally would. The particular piece right now is for high school students. So we have high school students that are slated for the November retest. And so that they would continue with that because until the law goes into effect, right? It's, they're still working to meet their competency determination. So we're just waiting for more information to really know.
Can I ask a follow-up?
Sure. I think we all want to know how this is going to play out.
So as a voter, I find that a little alarming that the people have spoken that the state, it passed to not have MCAS be a graduation requirement. And it, it feels like we're dragging our feet a little bit with the Commission of Education as far as, and I'm sure I'm wrong on this, and I'm sure perhaps people that work in Boston will let me know financially how long I am. But I personally did, I voted to not have it be a graduation requirement. I'd like to park my comments on that. But what did we do before we had MCAS as a graduation requirement, as a unit of measure for our, how our students are retaining information? Because I'm careful when I ask that question. And I guess I'm not going to park my comments on it because I don't think that how, I don't think that it should come on the backs of children. And I don't think it should come on the backs of students when we're relying on our teachers who are doing a great job, and we're asking them to get Masters Plus. And we're asking all of these things of our educators, and we trust our educators. And then we're not allowing our educators to do what they do best. And we're still just teaching to a test that doesn't matter. So when, what's that time? And I feel like I mushed it out a little bit, but what, what do you think? What's the vibe of the timeline? Because if I had a kid that was a senior and perhaps was on that cusp, I'd be a little nervous. Like, is my child going to graduate? And I don't have a child graduating this year or next year, but I, what's the, what's the vibe of the state?
I think it's, I think it's going to take them a few months to, at least, to figure it out. So there's a couple of things in what you said. One is that we're still responsible for the competency determination. And what they're saying is that that will be for districts to consider right now. And they want to give us guidance so that each district can make an informed decision. But that's written into the federal law, so we have to have the competency determination. So if it's not MCAS, we need to thoughtfully figure out, right? What it is.
So how did we do it?
So I think that wasn't a federal law, being able to place the competency determination. We had MCAS, and so those two things came together. Otherwise, you know, prior to that, to determine if a student was going to receive, you know, if you awarded their diploma, we were looking at our local graduation requirements. But I think, you know, even within that, there were times where we were still looking at standardized tests, moving cat test data, right? There were other things that we were doing that unengaged our progress along the way. I think they weren't necessarily married, but they were kind of coming along.
Sure.
So I think for us right now, the other part too is we had opportunities through the Department of Education the past three or four years to be able to certify classes. And I think, you know, that's something that we've been able to do for students who, you know, may have been somewhere in their MCAS journey, moved in from another state, you know, who needed to have that, that process confirmed for them. So I think there's some different examples that they've had, and we're just waiting for the guidance on how exactly at this point we get to move forward.
Thank you. Okay. Matt, oh, sorry.
Yeah, I think this notion about students who refuse to take a test or whatever, I think it'd be important to know what schools they come from and what categories they fit in. So it would have statistics about that, so we'd understand, we'd feel how it affects the overall achievement rate.
Okay. Let's talk math.
Let's talk math. So in math, again, seeing color coding system so that the darker maroon is Falmouth, the lighter color is the state. You can see that in each year, we performed above the state. Grade four, we were with the state. And then grade 10 is where we have the outlier for very similar reasons to what we just discussed. So looking at the achievement by student group, grades three through eight, we can see again, you know, sort of a similar narrative of performing above the state. Students with disabilities did make a gain of one now match with the state. So working to close and then move above the gap with their peers across the common law. In grade 10, we can see the impact of all students does not necessarily match the student group base, the exception of high needs is about where the difference is a little closer to being the same. And again, it's the same cohort of students that we just spoke about for the ELA grade 10. And then when we look at them from the growth perspective, here we see that as much as we're working to close gaps, the growth at grade 10 was lower growth. Some of the things that we did talk about, again, they repeat from grade, excuse me, from ELA, impact of chronic absenteeism being one of them for students. But then also, we were looking at, this is the one cohort of students remaining that shows up in this, this data outline that did not have an opportunity to have their curriculum through I Ready and then have the personalized learning mindset. So sort of combination of factors. It's hard to isolate one of them. So we look at the cohort, really just trying to understand the different pieces that impacted them.
I just want to call out grade six and seven again, six, seven, and eight, I think, were the years last year that we had crushing math scores. And we have them again. And so I just want to give a shout out to those teachers that are obviously doing something really, really right because those math scores are consistently right. Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, you guys go first.
Essentially the same question that I had for last one, like, sure. But how do we compare, or do we know how we compare with other kind of schools, like surrounding schools in terms of, like, do they also have kind of low? Like, I'm just not sure what does, what does like a good score look like? Is it like in the 60s? Or are they all kind of that low?
So one of the things that, so we can caution you a couple of ways about the types of comparisons we make right now as we recover from the pandemic. And this is, this is through DESI, and it's not just through the commissioner, it's also through their, their data analysis director. Comparing across years, going too far back because the test itself has changed in some cases from the impact of COVID is.
and the impact of COVID is, is hard to isolate. They tell us the same thing about making comparisons across districts. Uh, because everybody's response was different, the timing of that response, and then where they might be in selecting new curriculum, um, and then the resources that they did or didn't have, um, to be able to respond to them anyway. So it's really, really hard to, to make some of those comparisons and then know the story to make sure we're making that comparison.
Right, right.
Along Chris's point, can we get the five towns around Falmouth, Born, Mashpee Sandwich, Martha's Vineyard, and compare us with those four to see how we're doing in the area? Because that, I understand what you just said, but that would be telling. A lot of people do have the chance to school choice and our school should be on the top of that heap. So I don't know if we can get those five towns or five regional, whatever it might be, but those are the other four closest to us geography. And then I'd like to compare us with neighboring communities. But we're all going through the same COVID stuff too, so.
Just with at least some similarities between like us and Mashpee. I'm sorry, can you say that?
Go to dinner, ask for the previous.
Same thing, same thing, okay. Got it, thanks. Oh, Katrina. In terms of I Ready, are you, I just can't remember from our presentation. I Ready begins at first grade now, starting last year, and it stops at eighth grade. So you were saying 10th graders didn't get that because last year they were in high school and they didn't have that, okay. And it's too soon to see any effect from I Ready? Or has there been any noticeable data shift in the last year?
We're seeing it show up in their diagnostics fall and winter and spring, which I, I, Karen's here, I think, right with Lori Gatchel and, uh, Robin, um, Bowerman, they spoke a bit to it. And then seeing some of the gaps that we're starting to close, um, each year. And I think over time, you know, we hope to see, right? Those to widen with us outperforming the state, but we are seeing educations.
Okay, then in terms of MCAS, I mean, I know it's just one year of data. Was there anything noticeable about any of the elementary school grades and those tiers for starting I Ready? Nothing, nothing consistent?
I mean, we're seeing, so consistently we're in a moderate growth across, um, all students, right? In the student groupings where we have some, some yellow in a few places. Um, we're starting to see, um, one of the things you're trying to measure for, right? Is, is then, um, where students are placing, right? Going into high school, the courses and the level of readiness that they have. And so getting at the upper students, which then ties back to the point that Kelly was calling out, right? The impact of in performance, the high performance in grades six, seven, eight in indicating that level of readiness.
Thank you. Great, let's talk science. All right.
So as we're moving through, um, the different subjects and having an opportunity to get to science, um, there's a couple of things that I want to call out in particular in science. And I think, uh, they're pretty exciting here for us. So the first is that, again, using the same quoting for this subject. And you can see that the connections between all students when we look at Falmouth and the state, they're, they're pretty close and at the high school, um, and this is, so fifth and eighth grade, it's a combination. So the fifth grade test of sixth grades, three, four and five. The eighth grade test of sixth grade, six, seven and eight. So it's life science, physical science. Um, at the high school, it isolates biology. So it's just looking at that subject for that year, um, because that's the competency determination. But what we saw when we dove, um, further in, looked at the student groupings is the impact of our partnership experiences, um, in what we have often referred to as living classroom skinnsteens at the ponds, at the coastlines, um, and in various areas of the community. So in grade five, when we look at the comparison, uh, I recognize that they're, they're pretty close. But for students with disabilities, Falmouth increased by seven percent meeting and exceeding. The state increased by three, so we're at what an equal level. Um, so, so definitely closing that gap. High needs students, um, we increased by four percent, uh, over the previous year. The state declined by four percent. So making those adjustments so we can be ahead of the state. So this is looking at grade five. And so what I had included in here for you, um, this is, the students are then coming back. And not only are they doing, they're, so they're doing the pre-learning, they're going out. So this is, um, the example from the Kunamesset River Greenway, grade five students, uh, following a phenomenon. So they learned about a particular phenomenon that is supposed to happen in the river reconstruction. They go, so they pre-study it, they go out, they conduct their experiments, um, and then they come back. So as part of their report, they write thank you letters to the, the volunteers that are at the, um, riverbank then. And so part, they actually call out something very specific that they learned and they remember. So this is just one of the examples, but we're thinking about their learning how to follow that phenomenon in science. So we look at grade eight, uh, and we think about the number of experiences, um, that the students have had. Uh, we can see here the, um, outpacing against the state. So in Falmouth, students with low income, uh, grade eight tests, they gained by five percent, uh, over the previous year when the state declined by two. Students with disabilities in Falmouth went from 10 to 20. So they doubled the number of, or the percent of students, um, meeting and exceeding. The state declined by one. And then for students with high needs in Falmouth on the grade eight test, we increased by seven percent and the state declined by three. So, uh, and then just further indication, we have not changed our curriculum other than to build up the experiences and situate the learning and have our students follow these phenomena. But the rippling impact, and in some cases we've evaluated where we thought things might be great, culminating experiences at the end of the year, moving them to the beginning or middle of the year so that they continue to build on and are able to discuss those. And, um, our grade eight students, um, we've now completed, they've all participated in the Cuddy-Hunt Steam Academy. So, um, taking the vote ride, going out, having the experience in the estuary and on the coastline there and coming back.
Sorry, I missed which grade.
Uh, grade eight. So, so looping that in and then being able to refer back to that as they continue ahead instead of using it as a calling, um, is what we're, we're trying to follow that, that impact over time. And then Katrina, back to your question, right? Hoping to see that translate or transfer into their math learning as well, right? Be able to have that individual connection. So then, um, I put, I put my notes, but I did put aside two. So grade 10, same thing. So when we look at grade 10 for all students, we saw that we were a couple percentage points behind the state. But when we look at the student groupings, uh, for low income students in Falmouth, we gained by 16% over the previous year. The state only gained six. Students with disabilities, we gained nine percent. The state gained four. And for high needs students, again, uh, we gained 12 and the state gained five. So that opportunity to pull ahead, really see the, the impact of, of some of those experiences, um, showing up in student learning and having an opportunity to have that conversation, um, with our teachers, uh, with Carmella as our learning partnership specialist. And, you know, we're really, we want to see some more time studying in cash. But that stood out for us as a major influence.
Shanshan, Margaret.
What's sort of interesting that, um, in all the other categories, um, they've gone down in grade 10, the, and maybe you don't have any mention, but the, uh, they've lost points, but in grade 10 they gained in, in the state. So the reason why that would have happened, do you know?
That is one of the things that we are really working to, to better understand and digging into.
Right.
You just talked about the student disability. I'm going to focus on this whenever I ask your question. Student disability gained, you said six points or whatnot, and the state lost a point or whatever. Do you have the same gains and losses for just student disabilities? Uh, grade 10 math, which is below the state, uh, grade through three, three through eight math, which is equal. And then the biggest one is grade 10 ELA. Do we have those numbers of like how many points we went up or down and how the state went?
I don't have them with me.
Okay, I was asking that because in the categories we increased, we have the numbers. I think we should be focusing on these categories that last year I asked, asked the same question. Are IEP students in English and math are not doing what they should be doing? And they're not even close to the state average. So I would like to know if they've increased, I mean, if you look at your little green and yellow chart, student with disabilities are low growth the majority of the time. So, and I know I sound like a, a broken record or whatever, but I would like to know if we've made any increases at all with students with IEPs for English language, three through eight, including 10, which is our worst, and math, three through eight, including 10. Because it's great that the science technology went up and we have all those numbers and stuff, but we should also be concerned with the numbers that are pretty poor compared to the state average with the IEP students only who I'm talking about. I asked the same question last year as well about the IEP students and why there's no growth. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, sorry. Um, high needs students and students with disabilities. High needs students are IEPs and students with disabilities would be CHIP? Or what are those classifications?
High needs is membership, um, in either low income, multilingual and/or student disability. So it's, it's a more broad representation. So students with disabilities are students who have IEP, um, and high needs is, is a little bit more inclusive or broader, how we want to say it.
So IEP and physical disabilities would be?
IEP, multilingual student or low income.
Oh, wait, that's in high needs? And then, and then students with disabilities is not IEP?
Yes.
Yeah. Oh, so we have them in two places? I was.
Yes, this, the state has a broader category of high needs. Priority attention to students who maybe are one of those, uh, often more vulnerable, right? Population.
That's right. Um, do, do students with a 504 follow the students with disabilities?
Yes.
They do.
I'm just.
Certainly, certainly do, but I can look that up and confirm.
Yeah, I'd like to know.
Yes, let me just, the state has changed some of the.
504, I don't know how to explain it, I don't know, let's see how you explain it because I'll butcher it, I'm sorry.
It's a 504, so then, sorry.
Oh, Sandy, you should say it.
Sandy, I don't want to, I don't want to.
I'm so sorry. Sandy will really not butcher it.
It's in a combination plan. So it's, it's a little bit different than an individualized education plan where students have, um, identified area where they need specially designed instruction. Um, the 504 plan's a little bit different. Somebody might be identified as having a, an area of need but where they just need accommodations to be able to, um, access the, the school correctly.
Like physical accommodations or behavioral support?
Could be any of those things. But not like specifically designed instruction to help them with something. They just need a little support. Right, support would be in place.
Thank you.
Just, just a quick question. Um, just to clarify, so is, is high needs essentially low income students with disabilities? And then also ELLs? Is that kind of what's included in that?
Students who have membership, uh, historically it's in students who have membership in two or more of those groups.
Two more, okay. Gotcha. Thank you.
Sorry, I'm trying to remember what my question was. Oh, um, okay, so it's, it's sort of, one comment, one question. So the comment is, you know, these experiences for science and technology, it doesn't go unnoticed to me that it's a time where those experiences, like field trips and walking trips and, uh, those are often being cut because they're, uh, because schools are cutting budgets. And so those are on the chopping block often. So it doesn't go unnoticed to me that we're having these giant growth gains, um, in years that we have more of them, um, which is sad for other districts that are having to cut it. But the other thing was, if we think that these experiences are the driver for so much growth, how can we replicate that in other content areas? And maybe that's something that teachers are already trying to figure out. Like if, if you can do science in a field, you can probably work a lot of math into that too. So how do we, is, I guess, I, I'm not asking for an answer to that question because I don't know that there is an answer to that question. But it just seems like if we're pretty sure that the experiences are the driver for such growth, we need to figure out how to capitalize on that in other content areas. Does anyone see that too? Yeah. Awesome. Awesome. Uh, thank you so much. Um, so I'm guessing that we might have a follow-up or MCAS round two where we can talk about some of the other, um, questions. That was a great conversation. Uh, next up, first grade on policies. Policy some committee gurus, who wants it? Or Lori, are you taking it? Who's taking it? Go for it.
All right, so ILD is a student's, um, educational surveys and, uh, research. Um, we, um, revised, uh, because of the new federal requirements that parents must be notified and allow the opportunity to opt out of any time a survey, uh, analysis or evaluation is going to be administered. Um, so we, uh, we had the policy. So you can see we just, um, a couple, uh, cleanups. We just, you know, changed respondents to students, um, and at the bottom that we would annually, uh, well, the person was there annually. And each time during the school year, when a student, um, analysis or evaluation is going to be administered. So we, we had it annually that we would notice out, but each time is what, what's that exactly?
Asha, good question. So, um, I'm just curious if there's any examples of what this actually would be? Like what are surveys, analysis or evaluations for research purposes? Like what would we do? Is this like the, um, the risk behavior survey kind of stuff? Is it, okay, so is that that stuff?
And, you know, what we did, yeah.
Yeah.
Did we audit it?
Oh, the equity audit.
We made sure parents were aware of it.
So it could be anything.
If a teacher wanted to put a survey out just to ask a random question. That's why we changed it from annually to, um, before any survey went out because we didn't want, uh, teachers to feel like they were bound to know every single thing that they may ask the whole school year, once a year.
Oh.
We didn't think that was fair.
Yeah, makes sense. Thank you, I was just curious. Uh, any questions on ILD? All right, IGA.
IGA and IGE. What we did was we, um, all, all we did was combine those two into one. And so it was the curriculum development and then the curriculum adoption. We just made it one policy, no changes. Just combined.
Any questions on IGA, IGE? And this, we're not voting on this anyway, so if you have questions, you can follow the policy. This is just our first grade. And then IHBF.
Some bad intonation. Um, the change here is that, um, that you can, a duly licensed nurse practitioner can sign off as well as, uh, a medical doctor.
And that's in from this?
Yeah.
And so I'm so glad to see that in there because we have such a pediatrician shortage. So we need other people that can sign off on this stuff so kids can get what they need. Any other questions on IHBF?
I kind of wish the state also just included all mid-levels, like interim positions.
Oh, yeah, PAs aren't included?
Yeah, the way that it's written, so, um.
Yeah, petition our legislature. Get on that, Melissa, you don't have anything else to learn, right? I'm sure. Okay, great, so come back, um, we will come back up. Ashley, would it be on next week?
Yes, yes, we do, okay, because it's short, so.
Um, next is acting on the Falmouth High School ski club trip to Waterville Valley.
I'd like to be a member.
Yeah, great, awesome. Uh, any comments on this other than how awesome it is if we do it again?
It was awesome last year.
I can tell you. Seeing it, uh, we, I happened to go out the same day that, um, one of our kids was on this trip. We just happened to be skiing Waterville Valley at the same time. And, uh, it was, the kids had, it was freezing cold. It was colder than cold. The kids had so much fun. They, um, talked about it for months afterwards. It was well organized. I kind of, not really hovering, but kind of was offering to support if needed. Mr. Campbell is a well-oiled sheen. He knows the mountain very well. He knows the students very well. There were, as far as I know, there were no, um, casualties or.
No casualties, no one on the record on that one.
Injuries or.
Oh, my gosh. Okay, uh, we have motion in a second. Any last comments on that one? Uh, we lost Terry, so we can just vote. So all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? Any noes? Okay, that passes.
Passes me down, honestly.
Great.
Yep.
Uh, next up is, uh, update from the superintendent. Take it away.
All right, so, um, just, I'm gonna continue to follow up with, um, uh, sorry, with, um, now giving the future updates. These are the feedback, um, uh, the last one will be given to the building needs.
Oh wait, I didn't hear your information.
I gave it sure you have the same information.
This is the same information we just got in.
Yes. That was what we came up with. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And, let's see, so, let's see, oh, two, what's next? Oh, oh, yes. So I know that other people will probably give updates on the Mass Mass Conference, but, um, I have to do a little shout-out for our own presentation. So our team, Dr. Teller and Carmella, um, and you were there. You were a key part of the presentation. And then we had two partners with us, which really is very fitting, because, um, you know, the presentation really is about all of our partners. So we had.
No, you guys saw what we were talking about.
Yeah.
Getting into it.
Oh, I'm sorry, I just wanted, I just wanted to give a shout-out to the people, but anyways. All right, so, um, you know, that we have, uh, we, you know, won the Green Ribbon, um, award. And so building upon that, um, are the three pillars. We centered things around the reduced environmental impact of cost, improve health and wellness of students and staff, and provide effective environmental sustainability education. So reducing the environmental, um, you know, we were, you know, we were out ahead of the town on the plastic, so we had a year ahead of, um, single use. We had stopped that. Our Clipper composting, which is absolutely, I just have to give a shout-out, amazing that our two-year plan was able to be implemented in one year, um, and all, uh, all schools are participating. And our solar project that, um, we're working with Stephanie, um, um, the Sustainability Coordinator in town, um, and looking at, still looking at our first project for the solar at North Falmouth. And then we have our electric van. And we had, did have a picture of our students with electric vans, which is kind of cool, because that's how they got to a lot of our conferences. And so, um, just, I'm gonna be quick, because honestly, this was an hour and fifteen-minute presentation. I just want to give some highlights. And then in our wellness, um, health and wellness, our Wellness Committee has worked hard over the last few years. We built a wellness policy. We, uh, this past year, we worked on making sure it's on our website and everything's up. There's lots of great information, uh, for staff and families. Our health curriculum, curriculum includes at the, um, high school, the unit, um, on, um, our outdoor adventure, project adventure. Uh, and then we have our social emotional learning aligned throughout all of our grades. Uh, and then our recent, um, is, um, in addition to our free breakfast and lunch for all of our Clippers. We've had guest chefs last year, and now this year we have our school community chef. And, uh, we'll, we'll date on that in just a bit, providing effective education. And I think this was the connecting through line is that our partners that we've had now for six years, the amount of opportunities, um, that, uh, all of our students get. And so when we're looking at going green and, and going blue, um, you know, we looked at, um, we, we have a lot of opportunities for our students. So like our large students are teaching our grade one students about seasonal ecosystems, um, through the vermicole. And this is just a few that were mentioned. Our grade three is studying erosion. Our grade seven, uh, is looking at healthy marine environments, um, the triptych pinnacles. And our grade eight in Caddie Hug, which was mentioned earlier, um, you know, is, is ecosystems and weather and the oyster, um, aquaculture. Grade nine, uh, is the biological and environmental issues, including, um, all their work around hydroponics. And, uh, grade six and grade eight are both studying our mini, mini boats and drifters. The, uh, um, the grade six is studying the turtles and what happens when the turtles kind of get, uh, in this loop and get stranded. Uh, grade eight's looking, um, studying the, the wind and ocean currents. And those are just a few, but it, it all involves partnerships. And those are some of those, uh, activities that Sonya had mentioned earlier. And then I just want to shout out here on the becoming blue, really looking at, um, our healthy ocean ecosystems, our marine careers. We are in the process of looking at a new opportunity, and we're working with Mass Maritime. A, and a group of eighth-grade students went, um, over and visited. And we're looking at a door enrollment for our high school, um, students. There's a, you know, studying, uh, oyster aquaculture at a much bigger and deeper level. But remember, at oceans, um, our Ocean Day for our kindergarten kids, we actually start, um, learning about, um, the oyster filtration clear through third-grade Earth Day. Some of them I just mentioned at the upper grades, um, but this is definitely at a much deeper, uh, level. There's also the opportunity, um, that you can get your, um, the, your license to operate, um, in launch tenders, but at sixteen and by eighteen, getting your captain's license. And so there's lots of opportunities through, um, through this potential partnership that we are working with Mass Maritime. So that's really exciting. And we announced that, so I wanted to make sure, um, that you have heard about that. And then just, it, this entire presentation, uh, is on, um, our website in two places. At the Green Ribbon District, um, portion, and then also our wedding partnerships, because we would not be where we are now without our, without our partnerships. And so we're very fortunate to be in Falmouth and be so close to, to all of our scientists and, and our, you know, our oceans and coastlines, our Kunemessup River, um, the Black Point Reserve. We just, we are, there's just a wealth of resources here for our students. And I am very happy that the school committee supports, um, all of these field trips, knowing that they really are educational, they're tied to our curriculum. Four activities, there's the field trip, there's after activities, there's continued studies. You know, but it's, um, hands-on, we said from the beginning. Hands-on for our kids makes a difference.
I, I do wish that more members had seen, I wish Ara had taken a picture. At the end, you know, you had a good presentation when people are like hovering around to try and get the ear and be like, here's my business card, can I follow up with you? Can you help me? You want to do what you're doing. And, um, and it was definitely like that. I mean, people were like following us into the hallways. So, um, it was, it was really nice. It was nice to see, um, other districts in awe of what we have. It was really nice.
In regards to the Mass Maritime, um, Mass Maritime Academy, do you have an expected timeline in regards to that? Would be a very incentive thing for our present eighth graders before they make decisions.
So it was our eighth graders last year that went on the trip, so they're ninth graders this year. And I assume we're gonna continue, uh, with the eighth grade trip, so that they can have that. As far as the door enrollment, do we have a, a start date yet? I don't think so. I think we're still in the putting it together, right?
I'll have to have more later.
Yes, yeah, we'll, we'll definitely keep you updated on this.
Well, I had that same question. And then I was also hopeful, I have the pleasure of sitting next to you where I can look over your shoulder at your green and blue handout. Can you email them to the committee? Because I feel like there are some really big things in there.
Yes, there are.
That, um, I think that the committee.
There are sixty-seven flags.
Well, we got, whatever.
Oh, no, I'll send them all, I'll send, I'll send the link to, to, so you can see all of it. Yeah.
And then getting back to the next Maritime New Enrollment, um, to what Sue said, it would definitely be helpful, not just, yes, the eighth graders that went last year, and the ninth graders, that's great, but just for eighth graders in general that are looking to make a decision. I think it just is another, uh, draw to Falmouth High School. So, okay, what can we do here to ask?
Uh, well, I mean, that's what I was saying, we're, we're hoping to take every eighth grade group early over.
Because I'm sure there are freshmen that would, would be interested in that, especially that active license.
Absolutely.
That's very cool.
And then I saw.
It's a cool committee number.
Yes.
Mike.
And then I'm gonna come and ask you if we can purchase a boat.
Yeah.
We gotta have a captain.
No.
We go in a boat?
Yeah.
Now, sit down for a minute. All right, well, I got one boat, I got one boat.
I have two, well, a question and then a point, right first. Terry's not here, I missed Terry. But she has asked, there was two students who went to that Mass Maritime Summer Academy. Can we get them in here to do something like we did with, uh, Mr. Anderson of last month? That we've done with.
Thank you for the reminder.
And then my, one other question about now giving the future, because we're now on the current timeline. My, the Early Learning Center, would that be exclusively for Falmouth students? Would that be open up to a broader community?
I'm sorry, the Early Learning Center, would it be? Oh, I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry.
Because there's still the timeline.
Back to, yes, I'm still, I'm still on my presentation here. Okay, I get, so, um.
So would that just be for Falmouth students, or the preschool would be for anybody?
It could be. If it's gonna open up to school choice, it would be a, uh, school committee vote, because school, uh, school committee votes on school choice. So it, it could be, um.
I just, now that the other thing went away, I just want to focus on the now giving through the timeline.
Yes.
And that's a question. All right, thank you very much.
All right. Author visit.
Well, can I, I'm gonna skip around for just a second if I can.
Oh, yeah, okay, sure, whatever.
Um, I wanted to pass this out. This is, um, the Harvest of the Month, which through our, uh, kind of because of it, it, it also goes with the presentation. So our chef, um. Uh, sorry. Laura, in, in working through the, um, the farm, the school, uh, project that we're working on this year, we brought Harvest of the Month to the, uh, to the table. And you can see November is kale. And so she created a, uh, so we're introducing potential new, new, um, uh, produce to, to our students. So she created a kale, uh, sunflower seed, and, um, I'm sorry. Something else.
Garlic and olive oil.
I'm sorry.
Garlic and olive oil.
So it was a dip, thank you. And then the pita chips. And, um, I have to tell you, it seems like that went over very well. And, uh.
If I, if I could, we get the recipe for that on the, and I'm not joking.
No, I know, I hear you, but it's actually a good suggestion, so. Oh, we could start. No, we can put recipe.
Make the thoughtful eventually.
Yeah. But I, um, I think it was a big hit, um, for the, the, uh.
Yeah. Try it home.
Yeah. I like that. And then later, so on the November nineteenth, she's gonna do a hot lunch with kale, sweet potato, and pinto bean, tamale pie. So that's, so, and then carrots or December, as you can see. So every month, there's gonna be recipes around our Harvest of the Month. So we're just trying to get kids to eat healthy and try. So this is, so this was, I'm not, I just really don't share, because it's kind of on the field.
Yeah.
At a presentation. And then I'm gonna end with, this is like my new favorite book. We were fortunate to have, um, Terry, um, uh, Mo, the author and illustrator. So I'm gonna pass the book around so you can see it, but you gotta get it back, because it's signed. But she was here, and she met with students from Morse Pond and Lawrence, um, in our English language learners. And, um, and really, this book is so precious when you read this. Uh, and it's all about belonging. And when you, you know, when you first come to a school, maybe you don't feel like you belong, and how, um, through the lunchbox, through food, and I'm just gonna show you as well. It's so precious. So, um, that, once they started talking about their food and sharing their foods from different cultures, and how it brought, brought students together. So the, I'm gonna pass it around, so you can look at the illustrator. But through an FEF grant, we were able to have the author here, met with the students. And it was just, um, and this one is special, if you can see. So the, the student that was new, all of her stories has the break. So you can tell that this was communicating through, through, um, food, and food does bring us together. So I'm gonna pass it around. It becomes everyone's favorite book. Anyway, and it's, uh, and I have to tell you, so written it, and I just want to illustrate it. And there's so many, so much emotion here, but we're, that's just one, we have a lot of authors in our district. We're very fortunate that, um, our teachers and librarians really value that, that opportunity. And FEF, um, supports it in such a big way across our schools and for different ways. But, um, it, it connects our students to books in a different way and to each other. So, so.
And that is all I have to say. Okay, great, thank you. Next up is Routine Business, approving the minutes from October the twenty-second. And it's the gray copy at our seat. It just had a spelling, um, correction. Yeah, it's the same content as the one that was in the packet, but I found a spelling error. Is there a motion to approve? Thank you, is there a second? Thank you. Any, uh, questions?
More words of spelling errors.
Yeah, it is on, um, the policy section. It was under act on policies and. For school information.
But I don't remember now, so.
Great. Uh, all in favor of approving the minutes from the twenty-second of October, say aye. Any aye? Any abstentions? Any opposed? Great.
Kelly.
Yes.
Since we're in, uh, Routine Business, I just, um, wanted to point out that we voted on the, um, field trip on one twelve twenty-five. Behind that was also a field trip request from the same group of members.
Oh, I didn't even catch that.
I know. And it's not on the agenda, but I feel like it's included in the packet. I think that it would be, in my opinion, okay to approve it now. But if the other folks don't agree, we can put it off. I just think that the, um, the group would like to know.
I thought we voted on both.
No. Yeah, no, let's take, let's, uh, we make that, I think it's fine as well. We make that one, please.
I'd be happy to make the motion to approve this.
Hold on, hold on.
No. It gave, it was originally four point twenty-five. It is four one twelve. It is just one field trip.
What about the one that's in the packet that says three nine? Okay, since we're not sure, let's not approve it until we know.
No, it's definitely gonna. But if you want to wait, we can wait. Whatever, I just, um.
We're needing an O E.
We can do that too.
We're needing it. Okay, let's wait. Yeah, and we'll be sure that it's happening, but thank you for that. I'm gonna pull and tear it out.
Okay. And then, um, another Routine Business question, or is this?
Yeah, we're in Routine Business, what else you got?
I can wait for a request for information, but it was more of, in the past, we heard from the athletic director after each season. Will we be doing that, uh, this school year as well?
Okay, so under information. I'm just gonna mark it, request for information.
Okay, they're on the schedule, okay.
Yep.
And then, not to take this, uh, but when Mike brought up the question of, um, pre-K being open to other towns, and Dr. Derry mentioned school choice, I wondered, I didn't know that school choice started at the pre-K level.
It does not, not the state in there, no, this is, um, okay, yeah.
Or first.
Okay.
Okay. So I suppose we have some work to do, um, on that. Right?
If you wanted to, if you would have figured that out.
Right, but we couldn't call school choice.
We can't. You're allowing students from.
Right. I'm just, um, just pointing out that I didn't want it to be viewed that we were, uh, not being forthcoming with exactly what school choice is when the state recognizes it at K, but we used that verbiage when speaking of pre-K. I don't want to be accused of not, um, or saying something that we shouldn't say.
I think that's just, I appreciate that. I think we're just gonna have to take that up if we get it.
Sure.
Where they're allowed, because it would be a consideration.
Right, and I only mention it because it was mentioned this evening. And again, it's just on the verbiage and nothing else.
Okay. Committee reports, request for information. Anyone have any in the recording or, or?
No, it's okay. Oh, yeah, I went to the, uh, several sessions at the, um, I guess. And, uh, I'm gonna recommend that we have a school retreat. Uh, I think that we need to look at operational protocol and a lot of other things that we need for a school retreat. I have a whole list of things I would like to say I got at that meeting, but I don't think you want to speak to that day.
So you must have read my mind, because I actually, um, emailed MASC after the session this weekend as well. Um, and to see if they would come to do another workshop for us, so, more to come on that. Thanks, Margaret.
But, but I, I'm not saying want a workshop, but I do, I think that's great, but I also think we need a retreat in terms of a variety of issues that, uh, need to be surfaced and discussed.
Good. Katrina?
Um, so I went to, to the advisory, student advisory, um, and Margaret and I both went.
That's right.
And, um, that was a very interesting meeting. It was the first time school committee members had gone to them. And so we started the meeting by saying, oh, why are you here? What do you do? And they asked the same thing of us. And, um, we went through and sort of said, what are some good things and some bad things in your experience in high school? Good things, they all reunified. Sports are beloved and unifying. That's, my understanding was it's special needs students and not special needs students competing together. Everyone loved that. School lunch has improved. Um, hallway proceedings rules are better. It's less crowded this year. They wanted more unifying events like the pep rally. They really liked Spirit Week. We thought it was a success. Um, on the bad side, they thought the bathrooms are gross, dark, and weird. Um, the oncoming was disappointing. They wanted more things to see than just dancing. And they, I, we, I suggested, or Mar, one of us suggested, maybe they needed a committee of staff to hold on a meeting and suggest , um, ideas for them for Easter, since it's a big turnover of who's running it. Um, talked about dress for success at Lawrence. They all kind of looked back at it and thought, oh, actually, you know, I hated it at the time, but it was kind of great to have that stress of what to wear taken away. But some of them felt it would have been great actually to have a uniform, especially that you have to buy so that it takes the anxiety of trying to find something that fits the dress code and also fits your body, because some of the girls were saying it's hard to find something that's going to actually fit and look good, that, um, complies. Um, and then we talked about screen time. They all felt it had gone up since COVID, and some of them felt they worked better on paper. Um, and then the other one I went to was, uh, Teach for Learning. That was really interesting, um, because it was Andrew's first time, um, mediating that. I think it was his first time, sounded like he was saying. Um, he started it by asking for thoughts from the past for people who have been on the committee for a long time. Um, what are your takeaways of things that worked really well? What would you like to see us carry forward? And, um, people had some interesting ideas. One of them was having some non-staff members on the committee. And in the past, I guess there have been members of the public who have been on the committee. Um, they all thought that was helpful. There was a lot of conversation about AI. Um, they wondered whether Mass has a policy on AI, or whether we are going to put together a policy on AI. I told them that Mary has, is aware of it, and we had talked about it in one of our policy meetings, and she's come into it. Um, so that was a big topic, because they'd all gone to the Mass CUE conference, and I don't remember what that stands for, but it.
Oh, mask cure?
Yeah. I don't remember what it stands for, but they all, the keynote speakers were great, and they talked a lot in those, um, they usually give a little presentation about whatever breakout session they went to. Um, and there was a lot of conversation about programs that have been used in the past and that maybe they are really great programs, but, um, some of the teachers and staff have kind of PTSD from when they were used during COVID. And so they're not being used, but we're still paying for them. Um, and, and that they are good programs. But just in general, a lot of conversation about AI, and I'm sure that's going to carry on into the next meeting, I think it's next week.
Thanks. Uh, and, uh, Mike?
What did you say, First Katrina, about you and, you and Margaret had met some students?
Student advisory at the high school. Sorry, I'll explain what that was, yeah.
Along that, can we ask if Molly or whoever the student advisory person is now to come in? I missed her.
I just asked her last night. Sorry, can I?
Yes, please.
I just asked her last night. She's waiting to hear from Mr. Feeny, who organizes everything.
Okay.
So I'm wondering if, um, he has his hands full, was trying to find head holders for Tommy D. next week. But she, she has lots to say.
We are in the same.
We do, we miss that. I, I agree. It's nice having you come.
It is a student.
Uh, any last, uh, committee reports or requests?
So I, um, for the, I have the FEF liaison, and I went on a field trip, uh, that was FEF sponsored, um, the thirtieth to New York City. And it was a, um, art honors, English honors, and biology honors combination class. And, um, FEF paid for the coach buses from the high school that left at five AM. And, um, to New York City, we went to the, uh, Natural History Museum, and then walked over through Times Square, uh, over to, uh, see a Broadway show also paid for by FEF. Uh, it was Anne Juliet, if you haven't seen it. It's also playing in Boston, and it's a really cute show. If, well, if Juliet didn't, uh, unlive herself in the Shakespeare, um, tragedy. So anyhow, it's, uh, it's, it's got some today's music. It's really cute, anyway. Um, but FEF, for those of you who do not know, is an amazing, amazing asset to Fowl. And they like to say that they pick up where the district, um, either leaves off or cannot afford to do all the things that the teachers want to do. I can't recommend it enough. We are so lucky to have them. Um, you should thank them often.
Over and over.
And, um, promote them often. And if you have an opportunity to volunteer or donate your time or your funds in any way, I think they are fantastic. And it's not just about this field trip. They do so much more. We hear throughout the year of all the things that FEF, uh, sponsors and, uh, gives students opportunities for. And, you know, some kids, this is going to be their only time that they go to New York City and see a Broadway show and to know that, you know, Fowl got them there and got them there for free and safe. And back again, it's very exciting. Um, so a huge shout out to Lauren Kenny at the high school, Jane Baker, and I think Miss Goodwin, I think, I lost. So, um, thank you for writing the grant. Thank you to FEF. Thank you for having me volunteer.
Um, I'll follow up on that and say that I just saw they announced their gala.
Yes.
Um, so I can't remember what it is, but it's March something, I think, or February or something, so follow their page, March. Mark your calendar.
Last week in March, I believe. Go so late.
And the other announcement is, um, that electronic recycling, um, is this Saturday. So get rid of all those miscellaneous weird things and help Fowl, Fowl parents make some cash.
At Lawrence.
At Lawrence. I don't know the hours. It's always in the morning. And it always rains, so this will be like a treat, that it doesn't rain this year. Knock on everything. Oh, sorry, sorry.
Just going down to FEF, they're celebrating the twentieth year, um, at this gala and honoring the founders of FEF. And at the time, it was, um, three members of our school committee, Tom Kirkman, Jamie McDonald, Judy Fenwick, and Tom Stowe.
That's awesome.
Judy Fenwick, the legacy lives on.
All right, thank you so much, everyone. Let's, uh, have a motion to adjourn. And, and, thank you. Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys.